Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this June 25th, 2018 council meeting to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance, to testify, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Cavy.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Breeging of minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of June 11th, 2018, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Clerk, please call the roll on the approval of the minutes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to this evening's council meeting, and we'll have another meeting in two weeks, and then we'll be going on break for a while, for, I think it's six weeks, but we'll be back, so don't worry about that. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going, you say?
Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, you're in charge of that now.
Yes.
(laughing).
I was thinking of hearing Streets and Sidewalks.
(laughing).
I attended a meeting with the Fire District Committee last week, and other than that, there's no other meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meetings scheduled, I have nothing to report, but when we come back from the break, I think I have a number of things in committee that we can begin to discuss.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Cavy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no meetings scheduled and nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings, or, I'm working on getting a meeting scheduled for when we return from break, and nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Request for Council Action, we have sub up for the Finance, next Finance Committee meeting, we have 18-120 Job Creation Grant Payment for Sandridge Food Corporation, 18-121 Job Creation Grant Agreement for Craft Works Engineering LLC, 18-122 2019 Tax Budget, 18-123 Zerker Technologies Computer Rated Dispatch and Report Management System Suite for the Police Department, 18-124 Accounts Payable Clerk Pay, 18-125 The Memo Random of Understanding for the City of Medina Railway, 18-126 2018 Pavement Marking Program, 18-127 2018 Concrete Pavement General Services Program, 18-128 New Chapters 909 and 911 Regarding Small Cell Wireless Facilities and Structures, 18-129 Review and Discuss City Sidewalk Program, 18-130 CHIP Private Rehab Change Order for 34-39 Graffs and Road, and finally, 18-131 Memorial Park Special Event Policies, a discussion on that. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a number of events coming up here before our next council meeting, because it's going to be the homecoming week from July, well, it's a little longer than a week, from July 3rd to July 11th, and I'm just going to read down through these. On July 3rd, at dusk, will be the fireworks at Medina High School. On July 4th, at 4:00 PM, we move the parade from 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM, the Bicentennial Parade from Medina High School to Public Square. On July 4th, at 8:30 PM, a band concert, Medina Community Band at the Public Square. July 5th, astronaut Mike Foreman, formerly from Wadsworth, will be at the library from 1:00 to 3:00 to talk about his experiences being an astronaut. On July 5th, the NASA Journey to Tomorrow trailer will be open from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and that's going to be in the county administration lot on the portion that comes up across from the parking deck there out to Liberty Street. July 5th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, the JC's Commemorative Plaque will be unveiled at the pool. They'll have vintage cars on display, a courthouse pizza truck, and a disc golf tournament. On July 5th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, police vehicles will be on display on the square on South Broadway Street in front of the courthouses. July 6th, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the outdoor pool will be open with free admission. This is presented by the Friends of Memorial Park and Pool and the Bicentennial Committee. The, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, there'll be family-friendly activities at the Pavilion and the park. From 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, there'll be free hot dogs, chips, and drinks, and from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, there's a reunion of past lifeguards and park staff at the pool. July 6th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the NASA Journey to Tomorrow trailer will be open again. July 7th is the Farmer's Market on Public Square from 9:00 to 1:00. July 7th, from 10:00 to 7:00, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, the NASA Journey to Tomorrow trailer will be open. July 7th, from 1:30 to 2:00, Public Square will be the opening of the Mason's Time Capsule. July 7th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, there'll be music and old-time games at Public Square, and on the section of Broadway in front of the courthouses will be parks and service vehicles on display. On July 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, a free jazz concert in the park, put on by Ormaco. July 8th, 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, there'll be a picnic in the park at Public Square. Hot dogs, buns, and bicentennial cake will be provided, as well as music, and during those hours, the Medina Fire Department trucks and apparatus will be parked on South Broadway in front of the courthouses. July 9th through 12th, the Medina County Arts Council will present a noon children's program each of those days, and music each evening at 7:00 PM. And then on July 11th, the annual Medina High School 50-plus reunion luncheon is at Waymouth Country Club. The community band concerts continue each Friday evening in June and July, and they start at 8:30 PM, and for additional information on the bicentennial events, I would suggest folks go to their website, which is www.madina200.com. And at this point, I would like to introduce and welcome Ohio State Senate President Larry Abhoff, who has Senate Resolutions for the City of Medina, and second will be Mr. Robert Hyde, our bicentennial parade marshal. So Roger Smalley, the Chairman of our Bicentennial Committee, and Council President Coyne, if you would join me up front.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I have here a resolution by the Ohio Senate that's honoring the City of Medina on its bicentennial. Normally, I just read these or read an abbreviated version of them, but because Medina, actually Montville Township, I guess by about 10 feet is my home, but I count Medina, I have a few words to say about my personal experiences here. I didn't grow up here, but I moved here a number of years ago for what I thought was a one-year stint clerking for Judge Batchelder, and I went to Chicago after that for a very brief while and found myself coming back here every five or six weeks or so, hanging out in the square, going to Cool Beans, and decided this is where I wanted to raise my family, because this really is what makes America great. This is one of the greatest towns that I've ever been to, and you couldn't ask for a better small business community, a better community in general, and you see that every Friday or Saturday or Sunday in the square, and I'm glad that this is the place that I chose to make my home and my family's home, and I think that we are an exemplary community, and I am proud to honor Medina here today. So, whereas the members of the 132nd General Assembly of Ohio are pleased to extend special recognition to the City of Medina on the auspicious occasion of its 200th anniversary, and whereas acknowledgement of this prestigious milestone is a fitting tribute to the City of Medina, for over the past 200 years, it has become known for its residents' cooperation, integrity, and willingness to work hard, and these exemplary qualities are still manifested by its citizens today. Medina's contributions to our state and our society are too numerous to name, and they have been integral to distinguishing Ohio as a state unlike any other. Established in November 1818, the City of Medina has enjoyed a myriad of accomplishments that derive from a generous and civic-minded population, and those who currently make the community their home take great pride in its rich heritage. Their efforts have certainly made the area a pleasant and friendly place in which to live and work. America is only as strong as her unique cities and towns, which each make a significant contribution to the culture of our state and our nation. The bicentennial of the City of Medina offers its citizens the opportunity to share their memories and experiences, and to reflect on the benefits of their close-knit community, for they have built on the best traditions of the past to ensure a future filled with hope and promise. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Senate of the 132nd General Assembly of Ohio, in adopting this resolution, congratulate the City of Medina on its 200th anniversary, and we offer our best wishes for peace and prosperity in the years to come.
Thank you, Senator. The Senator gets polled in 87 other directions besides Medina County, and we're thankful and blessed that when we have ribbon cuttings and events, and his schedule will permit him to be here, he is more than generous with his time, and I do see him up on the square and at many of the public events. In fact, he leaves Columbus to get back to Mike's Jerky before they close once a week, just so he doesn't miss that. The other thing I wanted to mention, and then I'll let Mr. Coyne talk, is to thank Roger. Roger has spent the last two years before November of 2017 in preparation of this bicentennial event, and he has a great committee, but it takes a great leader, Roger, and we really appreciate the time and the effort. We couldn't think of a better person to lead the way. Your knowledge of the city, your history with the city, your former time on council, we thank you for all that you've done.
Here, here. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Senator. I think that the only thing I would like to say, it does take a community, to build a community that we have, and it takes effort from everyone, not only members that represent on council or the administration, but everybody that lives in the city and the surrounding townships that make the city a great place to live and raise a family, and I want to thank everybody for their efforts in making this happen. And again, it's going to be a great bicentennial year, and I hope everybody's attending the events, and will attend the events in the next week and in the future. So, thank you for all your efforts.
Madina200.com. Please go. There's all the information you'll need right there. We still have room for the 4th of July Bicentennial Parade. You can register online, so we'd love to have a wonderful group. The parade will be filmed by Armstrong, will be narration of every event or every entry in the parade, so 50 years from now, you can watch yourself in the parade back in 2018. But you have to be in it, all right? And as a part of the celebration on the 5th, the next day, at 9 o'clock, we're going to have historic videos in the park on a large inflatable screen, and if you've never seen any of these historic videos of Medina, they go all the way back into like 1916, 1917, some amazing footage, and I would highly recommend you try to make it for that Thursday night at 9 o'clock in the park. Sorry for the commercial, thank you.
I'd now like to invite Mr. Robert Hyde, who's the Parade Marshal for our bicentennial, for a presentation by Senator Abhoff.
Mr. Hyde, on behalf of the members of the Senate of the 132nd General Assembly of Ohio, I am pleased to pay tribute to you on being named Grand Marshal of the 2018 City of Medina 4th of July Bicentennial Parade. In being selected as Grand Marshal, you have been recognized for your selfless and dedicated efforts on behalf of the community. You spent 22 years researching and documenting the history of the businesses and proprietors in and around Medina's Public Square and the historic district in preparation for the bicentennial celebration of this year. One of Medina's leading citizens, you have given freely of your time and talent in your endeavors, and that is certainly worthy of acknowledgement. Throughout the years, you have set a shining example of service, and your generosity, kindness, and optimistic outlook have been an inspiration to others. Through your unwavering commitment to this community, you have demonstrated the potential -- I'm making you uncomfortable, aren't I?
(laughing).
Through your unwavering commitment to this community, you have demonstrated the potential of each person to have a positive effect on the quality of life in our state and our society, and you've gained the genuine appreciation and admiration of the Medina community. Thus, it is with great pride that I congratulate you as Grand Marshal of the 2018 City of Medina Bicentennial Parade, and I applaud you as an outstanding Ohioan.
Thank you, Larry, very much. It's been a labor of love for 23 years, and I've been so honored that it's been well-paid. I enjoyed every minute of it, and down in my man cave. My wife of 65 years, stand up, Shirley. She's part of the, she's part of the team, believe me. But I really appreciate this honor, Mr. Mayor, and I'm so anxious. This has been a wonderful time. I've been to every event, and they just get better and better, and I think if you come to the parade, why you'll see a great parade, too. So, thank you, everybody. I have quite a few cohorts in the back there, Rebecca and Tom, they all deserve a lot of credit, too, so I'm standing up here for your benefit, too. So, thanks for all the help. Everybody's helped me for 23 years, and God bless you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
So I get to follow that. I have something very exciting. We have a budget hearing one week from tonight.
Yes, we do.
Everyone will be excited for that. And just on a personal note, the mayor mentioned those, one of the bicentennial activities, a reunion of lifeguards on July 6th. I just want to say that I'm going to stop by there, because my first job for the City of Medina was as a lifeguard at the Memorial Pool, and I can still twirl a whistle very well, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Keeney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements. Tomorrow, down in Columbus, we have three officers who are graduating the Police Academy. Those officers are Officer Vincent Picoli, Officer Christopher Wade, Officer Evan Shear. They will be out on the road starting Wednesday with their field training officers. Also, an event we have is the National Night Out. That'll be held on Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This event will be held in the parking lot of Target Department Store at 1015 North Court Street. Law enforcement participants will include the Medina Police Department, Medina Fire Department, Medina Township Police Department, Montville Police Department, the Life Support Team. There'll be K-9 demonstrations at this event as well. The activities include free hot dogs, beverages, giveaways, games, music, vendors. The Cleveland Clinic Mobile Clinic will be there, as well as additional K-9 demonstrations from neighboring police departments. The idea of this event is for the community, the children, and the adults alike, to come out, meet your local law enforcement, and your first responders. Any additional information that pops up, any updates, will be on our Facebook page, so stay tuned to that as the event gets closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note for the public this evening. If you are looking for a job, or perhaps looking for a new job, the City of Medina Economic Development is partnering with the Ohio Means Jobs Medina County Office, as well as United Way Employing Medina County Initiative on a job fair that will be held this Thursday, June 28th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Medina County District Library. We have 31 companies and/or businesses that are participating with a variety of jobs in manufacturing, healthcare, and service industries. So hopefully, if you are looking for work, please come out and join us and apply for a new job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of updates. For one, the Memorial Outdoor Pool is now open from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day of the week, pending the weather or unforeseen circumstances. Just to note, in the event of a closure, all daily passholders and members do have the ability to go to the Medina Rec and enjoy the entire facility with those passes and memberships. I want to thank Roger Smalley and the Bicentennial Committee for sponsoring the Free Admission Day at the Memorial Outdoor Pool on July 6th during the Friends of the Medina Memorial Park and Pool Party. And lastly, our next Rec Advisor Board meeting will be Thursday, August 16th at 7:30 AM at the Rec Center, as our July meeting has been canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. Just an update on our construction projects. We did close East Smith today, the block between South Court and South Broadway. We closed for approximately six weeks to allow for the street reconstruction. I would note, we do have detours in place, and the city is providing patrol officers during the morning and afternoon rushes to help with the traffic. We appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation, and we'll get this done as safely and swiftly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Picoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our service crews are continuing to work with property owners that experienced significant flooding from the last rain event, and as the mayor mentioned, with all the bicentennial events, our service crews are also working to prepare for the various events that are up and coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions. We have two liquor permits. We have one, not to object to the issuance of a new D1, D2, and D3 permit to High Voltage LLC doing business as High Voltage Indoor Karting, 333 Foundry Street.
Move not to object.
Second not to object.
Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
And we have a liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new C1 and C2 permit to Aldi Inc., Ohio, doing business as Aldi 4, 1180 North Court Street.
Move not to object.
Second not to object.
Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne. Motion passes six zero.
unfinished business. We have non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes, will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach their front right microphone and state their name and address, so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting, as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and Considerations of Ordinances and Resolutions. Ordinance 99-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Lafayette Township Trustees for the community policing law enforcement services in its jurisdiction.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Chief Keeney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Lafayette Township Trustees have requested we enter into a four-year contract with the Medina Police Department for police services in Lafayette Township. The township will fund this contract with a five-year police services levy, which was renewed in November of 2017. The 2.3 mil police services levy collects approximately $300,000 yearly, and will be passed through to the City of Medina. The Medina Police Department will provide police coverage for the township during the term of the contract. Both entities have the right to cancel the contract upon 90 days written notice. The exact dates of the contract are contingent on approval from both entities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, on behalf of council, I can say that we appreciate the efforts of collaboration between the surrounding townships and the city. I think it bodes well that we'll be able to provide a better cost-effective service, a better service to not only our constituents, but to the surrounding townships, which shows that, you know, collaboration between us will, you know, there's a huge benefit, not only between policing, dispatching, but hopefully, in the future, a fire district. So, we want to thank you for all the efforts that you guys are putting into that. Is there any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 99-18 passes six zero.
And ordinance 100-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Windthrow Construction, Inc., to complete repair work on a city railroad track.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This work is going to be done primarily on the southern part of our track, from State Route 18 South to almost Lake Road. It's in anticipation of getting a third and new customer on our rail line or partner that is spray products. They've indicated to us that they'd like to start receiving rail traffic or rail deliveries by mid-July, so we took a look at this with our contractor and consultant, and this work is deemed necessary. This track's been out of service for two years. Completing this work will allow us to deliver to that location.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Do we need the emergency clause on this, since it has to be done in a couple of weeks?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to amend my motion to include the emergency clause.
My second also includes the emergency clause.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Cavy.
Yes.
Ordinance 100-18 passes six zero.
Okay, we're already finished with the council meeting. Council comments? Hearing none. We are going to now begin the Ward Three Council Vacancy Interviews. So if all the candidates would follow Mr. Durham to the back council chambers, and I'll explain exactly how we're going to do the interviews. I'm sorry? I guess I can explain what's going to happen first. I was going to explain back there, but I might as well explain why everybody's out here. What we're going to do is have each of the comments in no particular order, but they are drawn out of a hat. I don't know how you did it.
Yes, they were drawn.
And they're on the council agenda. We'll go in that order, and what you'll do is each council representative or candidate would come up to the microphone as we take one at a time, and they'll have five minutes to give a brief explanation of, you know, why they want to run for the office, their qualifications, or whatever they like to say for five minutes. And then each council member will ask one question to the candidate, and the questions will be the same for all the candidates, and you'll have an opportunity two to three minutes to respond to each question to give your answer. And after that, the next candidate will come out, and we'll go through all the different candidates, and then we'll recess into executive session, council will, and discuss the candidates, and we'll make our decision this evening, and we'll come out and let the candidates know which candidate was selected to serve as the Ward Three Council Representative. So it may be a little lengthy process, but we'll accomplish it this evening. With that said, if the candidates will go, follow Mr. Durham, and, oh, Mr. Erhart, no, you can hear Eric's first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Eric Hefinger, you're the first one, so you can stay out. Stay out with us. Everybody else, enjoy Keith's company.
And there's cookies.
And there's cookies back there, too. Don't eat them all. We'll wait one second till everybody's settled here. And those of you who don't want to stay, you don't have to, because this is going to be like an hour and a half. We encourage you to stay, but, you know, you could go.
I scared everybody away.
Is it me? This young lady won?
You know your numbers?
Okay. Well, let's get started. Eric, state your name and address, where you reside, and you have five minutes to give us a little bit of explanation of why you'd like to serve as the Ward Three Council Representative.
Hello, everybody. My name is Eric Hefinger, and I live at 551 Wadsworth Road.
I teach English and Journalism at Wadsworth High School. And I have a bachelor's degree in mass media, and I have a master's degree in education. I have been through a lot in Medina. I moved here when I was eight years old, and just recently, I bought my second-century old house, because I outgrew the first one so quickly with my family. I know how important community is, because I'm a two-time cancer survivor, and I can't tell you how important this community was to my family while we were going through that. And that's what community should be. It should be a place of support. And that's what the city council should do. It should provide a strong foundation so that our community can work together and thrive together. I love living in Medina. I love raising my family here. I love shopping and eating on the square. I love taking my kid to the baseball games in Reagan Park. Right? Good schools, walkable community, friendly neighbors, a sense of pride. That's Medina. The city has always been home to me, and I can't tell you how happy it makes me that my kids can now call it their home as well. And it's because of my love for this community that I want to join the city council and get to work. I'm thirty-one years old, which is young in the community standards, but my generation and those that follow me are the ones that we are going to need to attract to Medina to keep it thriving. When I bought my first house downtown, I was the youngest homeowner in the neighborhood by quite a bit. And since that time period, you can see the change starting to happen. More and more faces are more like mine and my families, and their concerns are important. Young families want a historical hometown feel that Medina offers. They also want the conveniences of what bigger cities have to offer. And in many ways, Medina can be that for people. It can be that hub that they go to, that they can live, work, and play. If given the opportunity to join Medina City Council, my goal will be to proactively attract these young professionals and families to Medina, while also maintaining the richness of Medina's unique culture. As a younger member of the community, I can provide a much-needed voice on the council and offer a diverse perspective on where millennials and their families want the community to go. Ward Three, where I live and where I hope to represent, is really a cross-section of the city as a whole. It covers historical districts, low-income housing, major businesses, and middle-class developments. Every constituent's needs and wants will obviously vary, but I believe that what I can do is create a reliable communication network between our local government and the people of my ward. I don't think that we need to overcomplicate what we do as a city council. Our constituents have issues and concerns about the community, and our job is to address those concerns. By gaining trust and building this type of relationship, we can in turn rely on their help and support when we need it, such as when we need to pass a levy or we need to inconvenience them with construction and renovation. There are some specific problems that fall within Ward Three that need to be addressed. The farmer's exchange is a massive and complicated problem that everyone sees when they drive on the south side of town. The Falling Oaks community by the Heritage Elementary School has had spillover problems with their lake. And with the closure of Smith Road and Guilford Road, the traffic situation is a daily aggravation for those of us in Ward Three. And if I am the Ward Three Representative, I promise to take on all of these issues and the many more that are even just down to the local singular household issue that people have. And I cannot promise that I'll be able to solve all these issues. I can promise that each issue will be...I'll go after it with respect and a genuine desire to help. Sometimes, updates and changes take times, but if we continue to communicate with our citizens, we can make these changes easier and for everyone to bear them. With my background and passion for this city, I can help each of you achieve your goals for Medina. We can preserve our past while still striving to make Medina a better place. We can bring new voices and opportunities to the table. Medina is my home. I have a vested interest in this community, and I want to do whatever I can to make this the best community for not only my family, but for all families here in Medina. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, you have the first question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for putting your name in the hat, Eric. Very well, very well put together there. Thank you. My question to you is, what unique qualifications or experiences will you bring to round out this council?
So as I said earlier, I am a teacher, and before I was a teacher, I used to work in television. Television, I used to work in television. I run the media departments at our school, the journalism and whatnot. I specialize in communication, is what I do. And as a city council, I can help a lot of ways and push the ideas that you want and get those messages out there. There are, obviously, the Post and the Gazette are here taking photos and whatnot, but if you talk to people around my age, they don't tend to read those papers. They get their news from social media and other ways. An example here is Mrs. Parnell has really stepped up in this community and put a lot more out there on social media. And I know a lot of people that have been following her to get news on what you all are doing. I think there are ways that we can go about that to help us achieve our common goals and get that message out there to everybody and not just a small group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parnell K. V.
Eric, thank you again for putting your name in and your desire to do this job. What is your current community involvement, such as what, you know, boards you've been on, what community projects you've been involved with and so forth?
None. I've been very active with my family. I've been very active with my school, but I have decided to take a step back from all the work that I do at Wadsworth City Schools, if given the opportunity here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Welcome, Eric. We're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
If you would take a minute, each year council gets a selection of which committees they would like to be served on, which preferences they have. Would you take a minute to tell us which three committees you would choose and why you would choose those to be on?
Well, everybody's on the finance committee, right? So I automatically get that one.
Well, then there's three additional to that.
I would gladly take up the spot that was opened up on the emergency. I can't remember the name, but it's the safety.
Well, that one's taken by Mr. Simpson.
Oh, it's been moved. Well, you still need to be put on one. Gladly you'd be involved in that in any way possible. The sidewalks and whatnot committee, and then wherever else you need me, I guess. I mean, I'm an open book. I am more than willing to learn whatever it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, welcome.
Thank you.
Like everybody else has said, I'm so glad that you wanted to get involved with your community to give back. My question would be to you, if appointed, what one or two priorities would you like this council to move forward to accomplish during your tenure?
So what I would like to see is an advancement of the square. I believe that what we are doing on North Court Street, providing the facilities, the room for this to grow, is really one of the best things that we could possibly do. What makes Medina unique is the square. It is the heart of this city. And if there's any way that we can aid or support the businesses to help that grow, I really think that's one of the best ways that we can go about that. I know that there's a huge...there's been a report created already about the advancement and where we want to go in the next areas. I think that would...any way that I could help with that would be one of the best things that I could possibly do for the city. The second thing that I would like to do is I would like to be continuously involved in the historical districts. I believe it's a great idea to really preserve what we've got going on here. I love old houses, and I just bought my second one myself. And anything that we can do as a community to help people rehabilitate and keep up those houses, I think gives Medina its unique characteristic, that people want to drive through here and see it, they want to live here, they want to be a part of that history. Right? So if I can help the square advance at all and bring new businesses here and bring people to come visit it, you know, tourism's great money, spend it at restaurants and whatnot, and then help those homes redevelop and make people want to move here, I think I would be successful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Eric, thank you for...thanks for coming. Appreciate it. And here's my question. I'd like you to complete...I'd like you to complete this sentence. Having diversity in our local government matters because...having diversity in our local government matters because...complete the sentence.
I'm going to go long form on you, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm an English teacher. I'm wearing right now, it's a little geeky, I'm wearing a Harry Potter tie right now. And I just recently read a study about the fact that children who read the Harry Potter series are more open to learning about new people, new situations, and are more comfortable with diversity. Right? That is not just true about Harry Potter, it's true about people that read. Okay? So it puts you in someone else's life. It allows you to see the world through their eyes, which is not an easy thing to do. And that's why I push literature, that's why I'm an English teacher. Right? Coming back to your question, government can do the exact same thing. When we, as a government here in this city, get together and we allow everyone to have a voice and an opportunity to speak, that gives them also the opportunity to eventually learn how to run, to get involved, right? To take advantage of the opportunities that we're putting out there, because there are so many great things the city does that people are missing. Right? They don't even know that these opportunities are there, these grants are available. So I think it's our job as city councilmen to go out of our way to make sure that we get to know the people that we're representing. We bring in those distinct different voices. We allow them to speak. We allow them to see that they have a spot here, so that eventually, maybe someday, they can run and they can represent their community, maybe even better than I or you or somebody else. So diversity matters because we all have a diverse upbringing that affects how we see the world. And it should be available for that upbringing and that view to be in our government as well.
Great, thank you.
That was a lot longer than the one word you were looking for, sorry.
That's a run-on sentence. Wait, no. Okay. Okay. My question to you, you listed a few items that you are concerned with Ward Three, but what do you think is the biggest issue facing Ward Three?
You know, if you're...what I hear everybody else complaining about is honestly the farmer's market. People have so many opinions on it. I don't even know all that we could get involved with here is the city council, and I'd like to dive into that. We talk about beautifying the square and whatnot. It's definitely a blight on it right now, though it could be something historical and spectacular. It's definitely something that I get asked about from people that visit the community and people that live here, is what are we going to do with that spot? I know it doesn't affect the everyday lives of most of Ward Three, but I think it is one of the bigger hurdles that we'll have to go through, because a lot of the other things in Ward Three are a lot more personal that people have. You know, it's dog issues, sidewalk issues, and stuff like that, which are extremely important, but they can be worked on at a one-on-one level.
Okay, thank you. Well, you made it to the questioning, so and you gave your introduction, which is great. So now I ask you to join the other residents in the audience, and I don't think John Albrecht's here today. Correct, Keith? Albert, I mean?
Do I go to the office?
No, just right here.
Perfect.
You're lucky enough to listen to everybody else.
Do you want a cookie? There's some cookies.
Keith, if John's not here, Michelle's next.
I assume you want Michelle, right?
Yeah, that's right. This is your opportunity to present any information you'd like about yourself for five minutes.
Okay.
And give your address of where you live.
Okay. My name is Michelle Nichols, and I live at eight-hundred South Court Street with my husband, Dr. Will Nichols. I've actually lived in that ward, I believe now, for fourteen years. I am Medina-born and raised. My mother worked on the square of Medina for fifty-one years, so this town is very dear to my heart. I grew up primarily between my grandmother's home on West Liberty Street and my home on Abbeyville Road, so I'm a graduate of Buckeye High School. I worked a little less than twenty years at Westfield Insurance Company in the IT Department in project coordination and administration. After I retired, I'm lucky enough that I can give back to my community now. It's one of my hobbies, as well as traveling. One thing, when my husband and I travel, I'm like a advertisement, I think, for Medina. We frequently stay at Little Bed and Breakfast, and we seek out little towns like Medina and go through them. And many times, we're disappointed, because they're not like Medina. There's no restaurants on their squares, if they even have a square, their businesses are gone. And we'll talk to the people at the Bed and Breakfast, and, you know, they ask me about my hometown, and so I go into my spiel about what makes Medina so great. And I said, "Well, for one thing, we've got a mayor and a council that all work together. We have Main Street Medina, and we have all those things that work hard in conjunction with one another." And that's why I'm involved with the Medina Community Design Committee. I'm on the board of Main Street Medina. All these things. South Court Historic Neighborhood Association. They all ties in to what makes Medina so great. And I grew up going to the band concerts with my grandparents, having an ice cream cone at Tony's Candy Kitchen on the square, which is now Chill. And I take my grandchildren to the band concerts. And that's why I'm involved with the Medina Community Design Committee, I'm on the board of Main Street Medina, all these things, South Court Historic Neighborhood Association. They, it all ties in to what makes Medina so great. And I grew up going to the band concerts with my grandparents, having an ice cream cone at Tony's Candy Kitchen on the square, which is now Chill. And I take my grandchildren to the band concerts, I take them for ice cream. And in 50-plus years, when they're taking their grandkids out, I want them to be able to do the same thing in Medina. And I'm hoping that I can help make that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Ms. Nichols, for coming. Very good presentation. Appreciate you putting your name out there for consideration. The question that I'm asking all the candidates is what unique qualifications or experiences will you bring to round out this council?
I am very organized. If I have a project, I follow it through. I work well with others, I play well with others. I'm a team player. When I worked at Westfield, that was one of the groups that I was involved in. I had to organize these groups to problem solve. And I think that I would bring that same to this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Parnell-Cady.
Thank you, Michelle. You've answered a little bit of this, but your current community involvement, what boards have you sat on, and what other community projects have you been involved with?
I'm the chairman of the Medina Community Design Committee. I'm president of the South Court Historic Neighborhood Association. I'm on the board of Main Street Medina. I recently helped plant trees with you for the community orchard project. And I've been, in the past, involved with battered women shelters, things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Thank you for being here this evening. My question to all the candidates that are wanting to be on council this evening, each year we get a list of our seven council committees, and all of us serve on finance, but then we list one, two, and three as our preference for other committees. What would be your three committees you'd like to serve on and why?
Sidewalks are important. I am amazed at how many hundreds of people walk by my home on a daily basis. I mean, there's always foot traffic, so that's important. I guess, to be honest, I would have to really look into those further to make a decision on that. I can't say that there's any other ones that really jump out at me. I pretty much go where I'm needed and make the best out of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Hi, Michelle. Thanks again for giving of yourself for consideration for this seat. You know, it's always special when people have the courage to step up to, to give back to their community that obviously has given you so much. My question, if appointed, what one or two priorities would you like this council to move forward on during your tenure? Can be anything.
Anything, okay. The opioid problem that we face in this town is, and any town is overwhelming. And a lot of that starts at home, but I think we need to be strong and do what we can to help with that. Also, safety. Coming here tonight, I saw a truck narrowly miss somebody that was crossing the street on the square, and that frightens me. I think that we've got to do something about that. I mean, everybody is drawn to our square, and we need to protect them.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Michelle, for coming tonight. I have a question for you that is a sentence. I'm going to give you the sentence, and I want you to complete it. So it's not a complete sentence, but you will complete it. And it goes this way. Having diversity in our local government matters because...
We need adequate representation of our community. Period.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And my question to you would be, what do you think the biggest issue is facing Ward Three?
I would suppose that would depend on where you live within the ward. Again, I'm going to go back to traffic, because that seems to impact everything in our lives.
Okay. Thank you. That is all the questions that we have. If you could take a seat in the audience, we'll have the...
Thank you.
Next candidate come up, which is Andrew Earhart. Keith, you back there? Hello?
You have five minutes to give some opening remarks about yourself and any other thing that you would like council to know. Good, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for the consideration and softly. Nice that you've done that, and I appreciate the time given here. I've been in Medina now for 36 years. I moved here with my family when I was in junior high. So I attended both junior high when there was one junior high. It only needed to be called the junior high. It was Claggett, though. And then also the high school as well. From there, I continued on with my education at the University of Akron, where I got a business degree in management. My parents had owned a, they were sole proprietors of a retail sporting goods store in Medina when I was growing up, and I had the opportunity to work there. And from that point on, I had quite a bit of education from both of my parents on what it takes to be an entrepreneur and have that spirit, have that autonomy of taking something and being very creative with it, and taking it really to whatever level it could go to. But also with that was the understanding of some of the challenges of retail sales in a small community. So I remember my dad taking me to various council meetings or committee meetings, and him collaborating with other business owners to understand and get ideas together on what they can do to bring more of a name or some more people to their respective businesses. So this was at a very young age and became very interesting to me. I continued to work for my parents after college, but now I continued from there in another vocation of financial planning, which I started in 1996, and I've been doing ever since, almost all those 22 years independently. So again, sole proprietor, entrepreneur in that sense, making something with kind of that entrepreneurial spirit. My wife's family moved to Medina in 1973 from Cleveland, and we met in junior high, started dating in high school, and this September we'll be celebrating our 25th wedding anniversary. Carolyn's been an educator in the Medina City Schools, and currently she serves as director in an assisted living facility, basically catering to the elderly in our community who have been stricken with Alzheimer's and dementia. So I find it, you know, a very neat thing that my wife has done throughout her whole career. We have three boys, all graduated from the Medina County Career Center, all with a focus in video production. My youngest is in Kentucky right now, competing in a national tournament for movie making. This is because he won at the state level while attending their career center. All three are going to continue their education in film at Cleveland State. All three are award-winning filmmakers. Their latest film is a short documentary, which has been in 15 to 20 film festivals, some of those festivals even being international. So I'm quite proud of them. From a family perspective, we're very close. We worship, excuse me, at Heartland Community Church. You may have saw yesterday that we had our service on the square. So again, a church that is very engaged in the community of Medina, and we, we serve within our church in a lot of different leadership levels. My kids are involved in youth group and young adults. They're on the production team, where they're in charge of running Sunday morning services to literally hundreds of people that come. My youngest has been involved in outreach with going on various trips, both foreign and domestic, to do good things and spread the gospel. So the reason for the consideration to council has been something that's been on my radar for a long time, and the opportunity has now just presented itself with Mark Colzar leaving. I think that I became to be engaged a little bit more because I knew Mark, and we were friends as kids. So as soon as he assumed the role of council, I followed him a little bit in his career. And I was always impressed with how engaged he was, and he always seemed to do a very good job, and your words were all kind in his departure. But I had known from people in our neighborhood that he worked intimately with on certain projects. So I began to follow him, and now that he has moved on, I figure it's time to step in. I'm very optimistic about the community. I love the city of Medina. Obviously, never have left, never wanted to leave. This is where we raise our kids, and my parents are still here. So I appreciate, again, you allowing me time to introduce myself.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you for coming, Andy, and put your name out there.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Question I'm asking all the candidates, what unique qualifications or experiences will you bring to round out this council?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess it's just, again, very impactful to me, looking at my parents and their background and working in their family business, having that aspect. So they actually rented in the north end of town, and again, I kind of saw what they had battled with. They took a very dying business and made something quite neat and interesting out of it. So I saw, again, the uniqueness of that growth and how fun that was to be a part of, but I also saw the challenges that were with it. In my current career from a planning perspective, I think it's very pertinent. I think I can be a tremendous amount of help there, too, because in the way that I help people prepare financially for retirement is usually with diversification and other strategies. The moments that we're going through with this tremendous growth right now is great, and people are building wealth, but we have to look at the roadblocks that are in the future and put in some protective measures for things to come. And I think from a city perspective, I can help identify that, too. It's just part of my nature to kind of be on the lookout for that. So I think any community will always have its challenges, but I don't see anything right now as pertinent to Medina. But I think that things need to be put in place now to prepare us for when the markets retreat or when there is some kind of correction.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parnell-Cady?
Thank you. Thank you. What is your current community involvement, such as what current or past boards have you sat on, and what community projects have you been involved with?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Most of my life has been dedicated to coaching. That's what has kind of put me off in pursuing an opportunity like this in the past. Very engaged in my kids' upbringing, again, with the three boys playing both football and, or I'm sorry, both baseball and basketball. I not only was a part of just attending those, but I was a part of coaching those, too, and that was very important to me. My wife and I dedicate a lot of time right now to Oasis of Hope. That's something that's near and dear to our hearts, too. So we spend time there weekly with young couples who had an unexpected pregnancy, and we show them, meet them wherever they're at in their lives. I mean, they may have very remedial skills in terms of child rearing and things like that. So we assist like that, and of course, I have, am helpful to them with financial measures as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Andy, for being here this evening.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Each of us on council serve on the finance committee, and then each year we get a chance to pick our first, second, and third choice of three other committees we'd like to serve on. What would be the three committees you would like to serve on and why?
Boy, I'm not sure if I could handle all three of those, but I appreciate that. Health and safety and sanitation is something that I, I looked at quite a bit, because I know that in filling Mark's position, that that would be something that I'd probably inherit. So that was something that was, that I looked into quite a bit. I do have some connections at the hospital, one with the president of the hospital, so I intend to, and have spent a little bit of time from him, gauging and understanding of that role. But in terms of, you know, what, you know, other different types of committees, Jim, I can answer you right now, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. I mean, Mr. Simpson.
I'm Mr. Lamb.
I know, Mr. Simpson's up. I just wanted to see if you were paying attention.
I was fully paying attention. He's not going to go next out of turn.
Andy, thank you very much again for continuing to say to each of the people that have decided to throw their hat in the ring for this. It takes a lot of courage to, to want to get involved in something like this and the desire to give back to your community, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
My question to you, Andy, is if appointed, what one or two priorities would you like this council to move forward on during your tenure?
Yeah, I think it's always important to kind of, again, like I said, having a propensity for planning is to just keep looking forward. And I think that that's something that we would owe the community. So the things that are on my radar are always going to be first and foremost with building business and making sure that we have the infrastructure to continue to support business in Medina. The future used to be 10 years from now, in my, from a technological standpoint, the future is tomorrow. So I think we always have to look at ways which we can put the infrastructure into place. What we did several years ago with the fiber optics, I think, was a good example of that. How do we attract more business? How do we, I guess, protect ourselves from, again, the next down market? When things do retreat or when things do correct, how do we insulate ourselves here in Medina? So we're always a community where there's opportunity, no matter what the economic conditions are. And I think if we look forward to doing that, so that would really be, you know, a big initiative of mine. I think it all starts there. The things that we do that aesthetically for the parks and stuff like that, I think it's all pertinent, I really do, but I think it's secondary to what really generates revenue to the city and contributes to the general fund the most. So I want to make sure that we're guarded, and that, just like I would diversify a client's portfolio and a lot of different options, we can diverser, diversify the city, too, from a business perspective, too, and make sure that we aren't just structured to manufacturing, but we have all aspects in our economic development to guard against such changes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lamb, now you're up.
Now you know who I am. Andy, thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
It's nice to see you. I'm going to ask you a question. I'm going to not ask you a question, actually. My question is a sentence that I want you to complete. So I'll read the sentence and you complete it. Okay? Having diversity in our local government matters because... Having diversity in our local government matters because...
I think, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, we're all individuals, and so we're all just created very differently with different beliefs and different talents. I always go back to my career, because as a financial planner, I've learned in consulting with other planners that there's no one way to get to that end goal. And I always find it funny that I think with all my experience, I know the way to get there, but I'll meet with someone else and they'll show me something that I haven't seen before. So I think diversity is important for that reason. I think that there's always something out there that somebody can add, and somebody's got a talent, a viewpoint, and I think that that consideration needs to be heard. So, yeah, I hope that answers that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. My question would be, what do you think the biggest issue is facing Ward Three?
Yeah, it's got to be Guilford. I mean, it just has to be. I'm just kidding, but, yeah. Yeah, Ward Three is interesting, and I don't know that there is tremendous pending issues there right now. But again, from that planning perspective, I think it's good to know and to make sure that I am engaged in the community. I think that there's a lot of ways to do that. I see on the website now that there's pretty much full autonomy and full disclosure on being able to contact me. I think that's great, but I think that we should always look for ways to continue to do that, because I think in the city of Medina, I think you have a lot of people that respect the leadership. I don't think that it's kind of the national, you know, bipartisan type of, you know, stress that you have here in Medina. So I think it's a very short bridge between citizens and the people, but I want to make sure always that it is that way. So if I were to be appointed and then in the near future have to actually run and get that commitment from people, I would make sure that, you know, I did have a full understanding and make sure that I engage with the community a lot to make sure that people are heard, so they feel comfortable in making sure that their viewpoints are considered.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's all the questions we have, so you can join the other members in the audience. And Keith, last one. You have five minutes to present, would you like to present to council about yourself and reason for running, and then we'll ask questions.
All right. Well, I'm Keith Racy. I think that's probably pretty apparent at this point. And I'm, oh, more or less retired. I was a Methodist minister for 25 years and then a hospice chaplain for seven years. And I have lived in Ohio, Michigan, Minnesota, Illinois, Connecticut, Texas. So I have lived in a variety of different communities. So I've always been a wayfarer, a sojourner, a stranger, something of an outsider observing community power structure. Here, I've only been around for 23 years, so I'm still kind of wet behind the ears, I'm sure, for many. So that gives me a little bit different perspective on what it means to be part of a community. My concern is primarily for the health, well-being, and safety of all the community members. As an outsider, this community reminds my wife and I of the two communities that we grew up in, respectively Beverly Hills, Michigan, with all that that conveys, that's where she's from, and I'm from Temperance, Michigan, which is a suburb of Toledo. So we know this kind of community very, very well. This is like where we grew up. We know all the wonderful things that happened here. The rec center is wonderful, the parks are wonderful. The things that you have done to bring the square back over the years is, are really a great, great, great thing. But there's also a shadow side to our community. Aaron Sable, when he spoke to the graduating class at Medina, talked to them about the Medina bubble, and he encouraged them to go out and explore the wide variety of different kinds of people and experiences there are in the world. So I'm sort of representing the people who see the bubble, you know? I don't know if I'm part of the bubble, but I see it. And there is a shadow side in every community. The only community in which there is no shadow side would be the beloved community, the perfect community. The only being who would be all light in classical thought would be a God. In God, there is no shadow. There's always things that could be better. Heaven has not arrived here yet in Medina, Ohio, but we like it here, and we're happy here. We're concerned... but we like it here. We're happy here. We're concerned about some things here. We're concerned that we are more inclusive in welcoming viewpoints in our community. What am I talking about? Well, I get prank phone calls. I have been in the vanguard of many social movements in my life. I'm sure some of you remember the Sullivan Act and trying to protest apartheid in South Africa, so we could change that, and we did. I have been part of the hospice movement from the very beginning in the United States. I have been part of helping women feel welcome at Yale, where I went to grad school. I have been part of using inclusive language in talking about God. I've been part of advocating for environmental justice, a very small part. I'm just a nameless, faceless, millions-of-people kind of person. And I helped people get over their fear of AIDS when that came here, and people were afraid of touching them and caring for them and relating to them. So I'm used to being in the vanguard. I'm used to getting prank phone calls. But I'm here to say that we need to include more people. There are people in the margins whose voices we've not heard. We're beginning to hear from the LGBT people. I was going by a lemonade stand just last week where some little girl was 12 or 13. She's selling lemonade, and right next to her was this beautiful black girl, beautiful young lady, and she's from Senegal. And her skin glows like many African people's skin does glow. And I asked her, are you a Muslim? She said, yes. And I said, are you a Shia or Sunni? She didn't know. But there are people, there are people here who live in the shadows, who are afraid because of conformity and because of the cost of standing out to have their voices be heard. So it is those people that I would try to encourage to be part of the civic engagement. Why? For our own sake, so we can be fully human and fully healthy. In my high school, which was an all-white high school, we played Fostoria in basketball in 1969, and no thanks to me, we had a good basketball team. We were all white. Fostoria was all black. We did not know that this was a racist cheer. Our cheerleaders said to this all-black school, at their school in Fostoria, you're going to shine tonight, you're going to shine. You're going to shine tonight, you're going to shine. You'll shine our shoes. None of us white people knew that that would be offensive to the black people, and there was a race riot. There is a shadow side of having too narrow a point of view represented in our community, and we need to be open to all points of view so we can be fully human and fully welcoming. That's why I would like to be part of City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Rose? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming out tonight, Keith, and putting your name out on there for consideration. Nice presentation. Question I'm asking all of the candidates, what unique qualifications or experiences will you bring to help round out this council?
One of the things that I have is because I've lived in many different places and I've traveled extensively throughout the world, I have a cosmopolitan worldview. For instance, in our community, I'd read the Department of Transportation 2015 study on transportation in Medina predicting what's going to happen until 2034. We have a problem, as they acknowledge, with congestion on the square, right? And I'm sure that that's not news to you. But if you pay attention, communities in Europe are banning diesel trucks. Diesel soot is noxious, terribly toxic. There are no safe levels of exposure that science has established. If we're going to look out for the well-being and health and safety of all of our citizens, we need to think about that. We need to think about that very carefully. So I'm able to see what goes on in other communities around the world, and I remember what goes on. And I ask myself, well, why can't we do that here? Why can't we do that here? So that's what I would bring, just a wide-ranging, different kinds of experiences. I'm also a licensed nursing home administrator, which means I know how to read a spreadsheet. I've also been a business owner. Okay? I have, I've been a business owner in a very successful business, closing mortgages back when, before we found out that some of the people were playing footloose and fancy-free with the facts. And I closed 12,000 residential and commercial mortgages after 1996 because my lovely wife would not move with me to the central city of Cleveland. She was too frightened. So I had to find something else to do besides ministry. And my dad's a banker, so I knew how to put financial disintermediation is not a waiver into English, probably about 16 years of age. So that was something that came easy to me. And of those 12,000 I closed, I never was sued. I never was opposed. I was never called to testify. I did turn in two mortgage brokers to the FBI, but, you know, I managed to just tell the truth and be honest. So I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Mrs. Parnell-Kavy?
Thank you. Thank you, Keith, for coming out tonight. What is your current community involvement, such as what current or past boards have you sat on and what community projects have you been involved in?
Oh, I've been part of the Medina County Home for a while. I've been part of Rotary for a while, but then when I became a hospice chaplain, again, I had to drop out of Rotary. I'm now part of the Historical Association. I belong, I joined Main Street Medina. I'm on the board of, I was on the board of the church. In fact, I've been, my wife and I have had the lovely chore of being in charge of fundraising for the last five years. So thank God, we're done with that because I'm running out of Monopoly money. So those are the things that I've done. And I've done a lot of, I've been on foundation boards in the past. I've been on library boards in the past. I have created organizations, Shelter Home for Infants and Parents back in the '70s, trying to encourage Planned Parenthood and the Right to Life people to talk about options to help women who decide to keep their babies, right? I helped create that. All right? So I've done a lot of community work, a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields? Thank you, Keith, for being here this evening. My question is, each of us on council serve on Finance Committee. We also each year get to list three other committees in order that we would like to serve on. What would be the three committees you'd pick and why?
Well, you know, I really haven't given much thought to that. That's a, that's a good question for me. I'm sorry I don't have a better prepared thing. But given that I'm concerned about transportation and health and well-being and safety, those sort of things would be important to me. And I would think that that would translate into some sort of concern that would be amenable to the council structure. So I'm really open-minded about where I would willing, be willing to serve. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thanks, Keith. Thanks for throwing your hat in the ring, for the opportunity to sit on this board. It takes a lot of courage, but I'm glad that you want to give back to your community. My question to you, sir, is if appointed, what one or two priorities would you like this council to move forward to accomplish during your tenure?
If appointed? Well, I've often said this, that I couldn't win an election for dog catcher in Medina. I've often said that, and I say that with all sorts of humor. I'm not ashamed about it. It's just the reality. I'm sort of a go-my-own-way kind of person. I'm kind of self-differentiated. I've been different places in different times of my life. And like I said, I unfortunately get prank phone calls, though, which is kind of interesting. So I would like the council to look a little bit more carefully at something like implicit bias training. I would like us to be more intentional about finding those people who are on the margins and in the shadows and inviting them to be more civically engaged, not just for their sake, but for the healthy functioning of our entire community. The example I gave you about the basketball team is an example of what happens when you have too narrow a point of view. So I would ask the council to be more concerned about intentionally finding those who are not very well-represented, perhaps, in our civic engagement and in our public polity to be part of our life together for the sake of the well-being and safety of everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lamb?
Keith, thanks for coming to the tryout, I guess, tryout. Good to see you. I'm going to, my question is, I'm going to give you a sentence that I want you to complete. Okay?
All right.
And the sentence goes like this. Having diversity in our local government matters because...
The well-being of our community depends upon everyone being connected together. Diversity is not just a nice sort of thing about tolerance and loving kindness. It is for the sake of the health of the community. Hearing perspectives from others helps inform us about ways to live that deepen our lives as individuals and as a community. Opening ourselves to the many different types of people we have in our community creates in us opportunities to welcome the stranger, to practice hospitality, to invite the sojourner into the heart of our community in a way that deepens us and broadens us. So it is not just for their sake. It's for our own sake. We want, you know, I want to hear from this girl from Senegal. I know the Senegalese soldiers that fought for France at Dunkirk had an important contribution to make, and I know their history. So I welcome the world.
Good. Thank you.
And my final, the final question, and my question is, what do you think is the biggest issue facing Ward Three?
Well, right now, the big problem is congestion, traffic congestion. It took me 20 minutes to go less than two miles to get here today by car. I should have ridden my bike. I could have got here faster. I think we need to think about planning in a way that recognizes that if we're too crowded and too congested, it does not increase the well-being, the health, or the safety of our community members. My wife is involved in commercial real estate, and one question she asked me is, why did they ever approve that subdivision where we live without adequate means of egress? It's just really, you wonder. You know, you can get a lot of houses in there, and you don't have to spend a lot on infrastructure if you don't have more than one or two ways out. So there's, something didn't go right there somewhere. When, why, I don't know. But we need to think about that. You know, we need to think about the impact, again, the shadow side of development. I mean, it's not all unalloyed good. There are things that impinge in our quality of life, and we need to think about that. That's, that would be something that I would encourage us to do. And I like what you guys do. I like living here. You guys have vision. You know, you guys do some good things. So I'm not trying to be really a naysayer. I'm just trying to say, I'm not Dr. Pangloss, you know. I'm not, you know, Dr. Pangloss Voltaire was somebody who talked, this is the best of all possible worlds. Well, yeah, we like it here. It reminds us of home, but it could be better. Okay? So thank you for all that you do. I do not expect to be appointed. I do believe I'm too outspoken, and I go too much my own way. I prefer not to follow the scripts of the social roles that are commonly accepted. I prefer to just be genuine and authentic. And I've had to be that because as a hospice chaplain, I have to have deep-layered character to be with people in all kinds of things that are frightening. So I appreciate your listening to me, though, and your hospitality to me. I am grateful for that. And I hope that you experience in my sharing with you my admiration for living here, for what you've done, and my hope that you'll continue to do the same.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the candidates. What we're going to do now is, you can have a seat in the audience. What we're going to do now is recess into executive session to discuss each of the candidates, and we'll be coming out of executive session and making a selection. So if you'd please wait around, I don't know if you had enough cookies back there, but you might want to get another one. We're going to go into recess now and do our discussion. So.
Make a motion. Are we going to do just for personnel now and then come back and go back?
No, we'll go both at the same time.
Okay. So I'll make a motion at, I believe it is 8:55, to go into executive session for two reasons. First is for the, to consider the appointment of a public official, and our second one would be to consider the purchase of property because premature disclosure would be adverse to the general interest of the public.
And for the, for the second one, we'll do that first, of course. I think we're going to need the mayor. Who else would you like to, yes? Mr. Patton? Is that it?
Jensen.
Jensen.
Mr. Worley.
I'll second that.
Will clerk please call the roll in a recess into executive session?
Simpson.
Yes.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell-Kavy?
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Okay, we'll try to be out as soon as we can. Convene from our executive session to discuss the Ward Three council vacancy candidates and the selection of a successor to Mark Colzare. First, I want to thank each of the candidates for their time and effort that they put in. I think it's great to see that your involvement and your ability to step up on a vacant seat and put yourself out there, so to speak, in front of six, not strangers, hopefully, but six elected officials to try to vie for the open seat is a great feat, and you should be proud that you came to apply for the position. It was a tough decision that each candidate offered something unique to the city and unique to round out this council. After going through and deliberating with the four of you, as you know, it started out as six, and two evidently dropped out from this evening, and maybe three. I don't know. I don't see Keith around here. And the, after going through and looking at each candidate, we want to encourage first those who don't make it to get more involved in the city and get more involved in coming in and on the committees or anything else that is possible because your input and vision is great, and we need more of that from each of you. So with that being said, after our deliberations, we selected Eric Hefinger as our new Ward Three council representative, and we appreciate everybody for their time and effort. So thank you.
We need to do a vote.
Oh, sorry. So is there a motion to accept Eric Hefinger as the new Ward Three council representative?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell-Kavy.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
And thank everybody again. It was a tough decision. Everybody brought something unique, and we hope you, the other two of you get involved because there's a lot of potential. So thank you.
Do we have to adjourn?
Do we adjourn?
Do we have to adjourn? Tell who what.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.